Thank you for joining us this morning for the April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three Montessorino Community Center Committee Special Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules consistent council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For today's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with this Community Center Committee Special Meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hands. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a committee member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and unable to speak to the committee. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or further comments. Lastly, when we are not all in the same room, all votes in this meeting must be taken by roll call.
Thank you. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Community Center Committee to order at eight thirty-five AM on Wednesday, April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. And may we have a roll call, please?
Uh, before we start, can um public member Rengancy state her reason for participating via Zoom?
Yeah, hi, I had to participate via Zoom because I have an official meeting at nine thirty this morning. So that would limit my, like, if I were to commute, it would limit my participation time at the community meeting. So I just wanted to optimize for that.
Okay, so for I think for this reason, we'll use the Just Cause. Um, and um, yes, so she'll be able to participate in Zoom.
Okay, I think we have to then have a vote to allow her to participate favorably.
No, I think that was for the emergency. So Just Cause will be able to. That's when Vice Mayor Just Cause meeting vote came in, we voted Councilwoman Turner for her reason. And so I think she, uh, video will be fine for this one.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, video. And obviously, but roll call you said?
Yes, please.
Yes. Uh, public member Harrington. Absent. Uh, public member Alan. Public member Rengancy?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ziber?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Present.
Vice Mayor Wolsheimer?
Present.
Mayor Mekachuk?
Present.
Thank you.
We have a quorum. Uh, right now, we'll do oral communications at this point in time. Uh, any member of the public may comment on any matter relevant to the special community center. Uh, if you are participating remotely, please raise your virtual hand. If you're here, uh, in the uh chambers, please come to the podium. And no one's coming to the podium, I will close uh public oral communications and we'll go to written communications. Did we receive any written communications?
No, no written.
No written communications. Orders of the day, uh, does anyone want to change any of the uh order of the agenda? No, we will continue and go to the consent calendar. We've got the minutes on there. Uh, excuse me, approval of the minutes of the March twenty-eight, twenty-three Community Center Committee meeting. I only have one comment. I believe the word, there's a word that's repeated twice. Um, it's, it's a typo. We can deal with it afterwards. I think the substance of all is there. Um, what I'd like to do is ask if any members of the committee have any comments on the minutes? No, I'll open public comment on the consent calendar. If you'd like to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand or come to the podium.
Yeah, Angeles.
I'll close uh public comment on the consent calendar and I'm looking for a motion.
I move to. I move to approve the last meeting minutes as presented.
I'm looking for a second.
I signed up.
We have a mo- motion in a second. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Public member Alan?
Yes.
Public member Rengancy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ziber?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolsheimer?
Yes.
And Mayor Mekachuk?
I, motion carries. Uh, with that, we'll go to new business and um Mr. Kohl sat. If you would like to uh describe any changes and where we are. I think as background to this, I'll just say that that this is kind of a checkpoint meeting. Gary and his team have done a lot of feedback. And uh, what we'd like to do is have a meeting tomorrow and it's a joint meeting at six PM of the city council. So that we're communicating what's going on. Uh, we can talk through um the initial cost estimates, the next steps. It's all kind of coming together. So this is kind of a preview to tomorrow night as background to tomorrow night. Um, it's a joint meeting, so we need a quorum of this group to be there. And the reason is is so that this is a Brown Act uh meeting as well as city council. So if we were, we would have to nominate a spokesperson or something like that, but we can all have a conversation tomorrow night. There's no action required today and there will be no action required tomorrow. It's just an information meeting so that everyone feels part of the process and they understand uh where we are going forward. Sorry for the long introduction, but I thought we should all be on the same page.
Yeah, no, that, thank you very much uh for that. It helps to kind of this, this preface everything, what we're doing today. Um, and thank you for all for coming here at eight thirty in the morning. I appreciate that. Um. Dot, um, and then Jackie will be available virtually and she can share her screen. If we need to see any exhibits, if we need to see the three D model or anything else that we, that she did last time. So this is, I don't really have anything new to report as far as the, the structure, the design, the building itself. Um, but I do wanted to say that what I have um uh done is, is I, I'm looking forward to the next step. And that, the, the next big deal for us is to do the construction documents and the specifications. Um, and in order to do that, I need a team. And so I have a structural engineer that he came and met with us last week at the site. We walked the, we walked the building. We um, uh, we just assessed everything. And, and really the takeaway from, from that meeting was our assumptions. Uh, how we wanted to treat the existing building and preserve a good portion of that while doing the additions and the seismic upgrades and everything were really spot on. Um, he, he, um, our engineer, um, thought everything that we were, we had planned to do was, was going to be feasible and um cost effective. And, and possible for like code and everything else as well. So he's uh writing up a proposal for us. And I also have all of the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing uh proposals ready to go. Um, and they will also do the title twenty-four energy calculations. Um, so I have all of those key consultants ready, all lined up. Um, and if we can, and once we get all the contracts ready to go, my team uh uh, and these consultants will be immediately go into action. Um, and hopefully we can um prepare this set of documents that can go out the bid in a, in a very timely manner. Well, that's our hope to not string this on. We know there's a delay. That, that there is um a timeline on this and the desire to get things started quickly. And um, and so we're going to do the best we can to pull it all together. Um. Let's see, um.
So, so just just.
If anybody has any questions up to this point.
So we've got, on the team, we've got the structural engineer, that's the gentleman that I met.
Correct.
And have you already signed an engagement letter with them?
No, I'm waiting for that. And, and actually, that will be, all of my consultants will actually um sign directly with the city. Right?
Okay.
And, and that is a cost savings to the city. That, that'll save the ten percent on all their fees. Otherwise, I have a ten percent markup on all that.
Okay.
I will manage all of them.
Yes.
I will oversee them and I can review their invoices, et cetera. But essentially, there's a, there's a more of a direct connection to the city.
Yeah.
And so that saves a nice chunk of change. Yeah.
So we've got the structural engineer, we've got the title twenty-four. Can you just list?
And then what we refer to as the MEP, Mechanical, Electrical, and Plumbing.
Is that one firm or is that three firms?
It's actually one firm that does it all for me now. So it's a one-stop shop. And they also do my title twenty-four, so it's all integrated.
Oh, okay. So we got the structural engineer, T twenty-four, mech- MEP.
Plumbing, yeah, MEP. And they will also advise on solar.
And, oh, this, the same ones do the solar?
Correct.
Got it.
Now, in the, in the, in the plumbing, they will do a gray water plan as well as the black water. So we're going to separate the, 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 um, the gray and black to do a reclamation um thing for the, for the credits.
Yeah.
Um, and all the other, all the other special things that we have planned for the building. Uh, my uh MEP guy is pretty savvy and he can put that together.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry, there is, oh, landscaping.
Correct. Thank you very much. And so I've also um have been engaging with David Fox, who's a local landscape architect. He's been doing it um for many, many years. He's a, he's an expert. He's done several projects in Montessorino, so he has a connection to the city. Um, and he has generously offered his design time pro bono. Um, and it's just drafting time and it, and the, and all, and all that together. And so I have a number for that as well. He's been out of town, but I've been communicating with him and he's given me some estimates. And so we have a general idea of what all of these um soft costs are going to amount to. Um, uh, and so, and then we will, we will, if you want, we can um, we'll, we'll present that at the, at the appropriate time if that needs to be presented to council. Um, or if it's just something that we deal with through the city manager, so.
Are you, are you talking about the?
All of the, all of the consulting.
The agreements?
Yes.
Okay, we, we can work through that offline.
Okay.
That's an administrative thing.
Perfect.
Um, and then also, do you want to talk briefly about the survey? Because I think that the gentleman's been out of town.
Yes. When we inherited this project, uh, or not inherit, when we took over the project, um, the previous architect had um some plans that we were using um as a reference. And one of them was from his civil engineer that he hired. Um, and it's a site, the site plan, we got CAD files of that. Um, and it was, it was, it was difficult to get all the information from this gentleman. Um, and.
The civil engineer?
The civil engineer, the civil engineer. He was cooperating, but it, it was kind of spotty. But everything we got, when we analyzed it, is, something wasn't adding up. Literally, it wasn't adding up. And so we decided that um, this was, it was so often, so I contacted my, uh, one of my surveyors.
Um, oh, just a second. Another piece of the puzzle was we had to get a title report, a preliminary title report.
Yeah, yeah. So in order to.
That helped you with the, to see what all the numbers were.
Correct. And so, um, and we had, we're working with the old civil engineer, the, the previous civil engineer, gathering all this information that he requested. And that was a title, preliminary title report that showed um, the process of these two properties being merged. And a lot line adjustment on the eastern property line that happened a few years ago and, and some other information. So all of that, now we have all of the legal documentation for this property. And we gave it to the other civil engineer and kept asking for a proposal from, for the survey, to redo the survey or to finish up the boundary survey, right? And it never, never really got anywhere. And so we got frustrated. And so I just simply placed a call to another surveyor. And he goes, sure, send me all of what you have. And he, I sent it everything to him and he goes, yeah, so I could start it next week, you know? So I said, okay, let me get your proposal. And we got the proposal signed. And he was out the next day after the proposal was signed, spotting thing. And the first thing he saw was that the original survey was, it was off by over two feet from the monument in the corner of Rose, at the intersection of Rose and Highway Nine. And there's a monument right there. And it was two feet off. And that two feet is a huge amount. You're two inches in surveyor's terms, and their world's a lot. Two tenths of an inch is something more tall level. There's a two feet. And he saw it like, like that. And so that told me that we, we're with the right person and, and we were hopeful that this was going to help us out. And sure enough, when we got his preliminaries, where we have uh the preliminary boundary and uh where all the buildings are located with the streets. And now this existing post office is faced right on the thirty-foot setback. Where, uh, what we're going off of on the previous survey was that it was encroaching by two feet. And so that building was non-conforming by two feet supposedly. Um, and I think it also reduced the amount of non-conformity on the, on the Rose Avenue side as well. And so the building is much less non-conforming than we had assumed or that we were led to believe. Uh, and so this is all really, really positive um things happening right now on, on that site. So it's really, it's really exciting because now there's no, um, uh, there's, there's no poss, there's no reason to have to uh seek any type of exception or variance or anything like that uh for extending our uh non-conforming setback. And so um it just takes a lot of uh load and it makes us way more ease moving forward with the planning, the planning process. Okay, so uh that's, that's really been uh this kind of like little bit of wind behind our sails here. So, um, thank you for, for bringing that one up. So I appreciate that. So we're putting all these things together and we're, we're really looking forward to moving this thing forward. Um. Uh, there will be a few things um that come up as we start to get into the nitty-gritty.
Uh, just, if I could interrupt just for a moment to give the rest of the committee some background. What we've found in the city of Montessorino is there's a lot of lot line adjustments and things that changed and moved over the years. So this is not uncommon, the lot line adjustment that happened. And the survey being off, that I haven't seen before per se. But, you know, it is extremely valuable in this city to always make sure that your survey is correct. Just, it's because something's non-legal, non-conforming, you know, what, how did that happen? How could that happen? So, so fortunately, this one went in the right direction for us.
Correct.
From it. So that's a good thing. I just wanted to give some, some background.
And so we'll be able to use this survey for the whole property for any other purposes as well.
Yeah. So that's the only problem you found. All the other uh boundaries aren't in the right place?
Um, we are more focused on, on just our building and our project right now. Right, right. And um the surveyor will, is out of town. Uh, he, he, he was able to get some of this work done before he left and he had a planned two-week vacation, but he'll be back on Monday. And he promised us to, to wrap it up when he gets back. And so we'll have all of the information. Um, all of the spots, all the trees, where the fences are, where the, in relation to the problem. We'll have all of that, should have it in another, I don't know, ten days or so. You know, he's acting very quickly for me. That's really great. So, um. Okay, does anybody have any questions so far? No? Okay. Um, so when we move forward with the construction documents, we're going to take a very hard look at um every little detail and interfacing with our structural engineer as well as our MEP consultant. Um, and there will be things that we might have to modify to address um there. Um, and so what we're going to do is we will identify anything that's um uh specific architecturally or um aesthetically or um functionally that um is appropriate to have the committee review and will most likely have at least one review meeting. So keep your calendars open. Um, and we can have a working session uh where we can go over all of this uh in detail. Okay, so that'll be our last kind of stab, last bite at the apple to make this how everybody wants to see it. And though there's going to be some, some fun stuff to look at, okay? So, and we will also have some preliminary finished materials that we were going to want to show you um before we can finalize all those specifications. You know, everything from the roofing to the flooring, um, to cabinets, to um that type of a thing, right? So that the big picture finished materials and specifications, we're going to want uh to show you what we have kind of narrowed it down to and our concepts. And then, you know, this is, this is your house, right? We're just the, the facilitators. So you, I, you're our client. And that's how we're going to treat this relationship. And um, I'm, I've always taken the approach in my per, in my practice to listen to my clients and to help them find what is the right thing to do. Um, and there's not always a right and a wrong. And so there's a lot of preferences, right? So um, there's, there's going to be preferences and it might come down to, you know, the um, one partner wants, you know, brown and one partner wants blue, you know? So um, uh, we'll try to be the marriage counselor and, and as we do often. And um, we'll try to get there. Um, and so, so we would probably anticipate within about a week and a half of when we get the green light to have a preliminary um package to be reviewed. So we're, we're really trying to fast-track this. Um, just we, uh, the, the mayor is setting pretty uh lofty goals for us. Um, and so we're, we're trying to take on that challenge as we can, so.
Uh, thank you. I, what we're trying to do is be a good client as well so that um, so we can keep moving. So if someone needs something, as someone, if you and your team need anything, you let us know. This is the number one priority for the city, for me. If you've got, someone's got to get into the building, like, that's minutes away. Um, and uh, we will work within the community that we can to facilitate any thing that's required. For example, on the PG&E side or whatever, we will try to fast-track and, and call the favors that are available. Because there's, that is going to be an issue. We've got, and just briefly, on the electric side, we, this is two separate buildings with two meters, but we need to move to one building or two buildings with one meter. And we've got an overhead service and we've got an underground service. So we've got to figure out which one would be best from our resilience perspective. Because the other thing that we want to do is have this building operable and powered seven twenty-four, three sixty-five, even if the power goes out in our community as it's done early, frequently this year. So I'm sorry for interrupting, but I, I just want to say we're trying to do this quickly, but we're also going to be as helpful as possible.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And that PG&E thing you, you mentioned, uh, we all know, or maybe you've heard how um PG&E is uh kind of overworked and understaffed and causing a lot of delays. And so um that's something we want to jump on immediately. Um, and as Brian has, has mentioned, we have to figure out where the best uh point of service will be, whether it's into the, into this building, the, the city hall, or if it's in the community center. We will be set up to, to, to make that happen. The, one of the main reasons is that if this building has a generator and the other building is going to have quite a bit of solar and batteries, and we want the buildings to be able to help share um backup loads. And you have to have one meter to make that happen. You can't have two meters. You can't feed across uh to another meter. So um, so that's why we have to just put all the eggs into the one basket. So we, we, we're, do, we have to do some analysis on that. And that's, that could be tricky as well because PG&E is, is slow to move. But if we can, um, like I said, you know, it's not fair to the neighbors or our residents, I'll be put it that way. Not the neighbor, but the, all of our clients who um have to wait in line. But um sometimes, you know, the city, if, if the city, if we can get someone just to actively help us in the beginning to consult, that would be fantastic. So if anybody has any friends or family in PG&E, maybe that's off record, but.
Um, um, yeah, I think it's, I think it's all good. But to get us lined up and a timeline in when we can go out to bid for this and just as background into that process, where you've already got some preliminary cost estimates, so someone's been involved with this.
Correct.
But we want to get, we want to pre-qualify bidders for this in a way. We're obligated, we, the city of Montessorino are obligated to put this out for public bid and to pay what's called a prevailing wage. And then we have to, when we receive the bids, um, they're all opened at the same time. And we are oblig, then they're analyzed, but we're obligated to take the lowest bid.
Or reject them all.
Or reject them all. That is correct. Yeah. Um, the other, do you, do you want to talk briefly about the parking lot as well, that project? Or do you want?
Well, so the parking lot, um, there's, there's some parking, striping, and work that is associated with this project. And then there's the greater uh project of the whole parking lot itself. And that's another, I think that's um something that I think is better handled, two separate projects um for, for many reasons, funding mostly and, and processing. Um, it can be handled concurrently um as, because what we're going to be required to do is add or redo the parking adjacent to the building, to the community center. Um, and also we want to re-sweat, grade the parking on Rose Avenue. Um, so it's more ADA compliant. Um, and it'll obviously work better um for our planned drop-off, drive-through, drop-off, pickup um center and all that stuff as well. So um, those numbers, I think we would, we'd be put in the bid. But the remainder of the parking lot, uh, I think needs to be really addressed. The, the whole plan needs to be really looked at by a licensed civil engineer that can deal with the C three, uh, which is drainage and stormwater drainage issues, um, et cetera. Um, by a civil engineer and have them work with the engineering department and everything like that. And so I'm not really privy to what is required and what needs to be done. But there is, should be some interface and, and, and cross-communication between what we have shown and what is going to be the, the future of the parking lot.
Yeah. Oh, oh, for, for the benefit of the committee, um, West Valley Clean Water Management Authority has a permit and has permits for each of the municipalities that make up that entity. And we have to get a permit for the city of Montessorino to take our stormwater and put it into uh the bay through the storm drain system. And as part of that, this year, we have to have a project. Each municipality has to have a project on their public land that is helping the infiltration of stormwater into the ground. So we in the city of Montessorino only really have one property, which is this. So, we in the city of Monte Serrino only really have one property, which is this property. So we've gotta do a project on the, on our, on our parking lot. And it's, it's separate, but as Vice Mayor Wolfsheimer said at one of our meetings, one of our most recent meetings. We have to take an integrated approach, we can't just piecemeal doing the parking lot project for the storm water. This one and other things, we kinda have to put them all together. And the other one that I'll mention very briefly is the Neighborhood Incident Command Post, the NICP. And what that is, is if you look at Monte Serrino and Los Gatos. And Saratoga as an area, and there's an emergency. There's a, there's a group that's called the Community Emergency Response Team, or otherwise known as CERT. And the CERT, they have to. Say, okay, there's an emergency operation center, but you needed a neighborhood incident response center, and I think there's. There's eight or nine in Los Gatos, and there's only one in Monte Serrino. And, and that's over by Dave's Ave School, I don't wanna go into a rabbit hole, but I just want you to be aware that we. Are in discussions to put an externally mounted cabinet. On the west side of the building, so that it's not a full NICP, and NICP just. Is like a shed and you go, and it's got a combination lock, and any volunteer, if they're dispatched there, they can go and they can open it up. It's got a little depth, it's got some radios in there, they can then communicate with the emergency operations center. And then CERT volunteers go there, they get their instructions, and they go into neighborhoods, and. It sounds morbid, but they are there to understand, you know, where people are, have perished. And, and where there are people that are alive, and, cause this is a natural disaster. So we need one somewhere. On Highway nine in this area, the closest one to this physical building is St. Mary's School in downtown Los Gatos. And then there's another one by the library, and these are the sheds. And then there's a shed on Dave's Ave, Dave's Ave Elementary School. So it's just one other little piece of the puzzle, but we have to take an integrated approach, so when we deliver the community center. It's got these other components that we're doing in parallel. Sorry for, you know, I just wanted everyone to start to understand the, the bigger picture and the different things that we've gotta do.
And, and that, that locker storage closet has been added to the most recent plans. We don't have a lot of detail on it, and so we're gonna need quite a bit of help on what goes in it, but we can provide the shelf, yeah.
And, and electric, uh, uh, electrical receptacle going to that. So that radios can always be charged on the little trickle charger things that are there, anyways, sorry, I. Just sensitive to our time, but it's just another piece.
So, so. I love the idea of integrating and not doing the piecemeal approach, integrating this whole project, the parking lot project. It's not in my scope, and so we're happy to coordinate or, or at least interface with. Whoever is gonna be leading that.
I, I think that the survey is a key. That data file, the whatever is gonna be used, whoever the engineer is going to be to work on that project. With the permeable favors and whatever infrastructure is required. And we can deal offline, but coordinate that, but that's why all these pieces, you know, if I do a survey for this, then do something else and.
Right, the survey for sure will work for all of that.
It's, it's also a matter of costs, uh, cost savings, of course, if we finished that building and restripped the parking lot. And then two weeks later, I tear it a hole, you know, to put in favors, that, to me, that doesn't make any sense, so we can take a look at all of this and the timeline.
Plus, plus the mobilization, I mean, we have a very small piece of property here, in which there's going to be a lot of construction activity. At the same time, the city's gonna be trying to do regular business. And there's not gonna be a lot of space, and I think that's going to jeopardize much of this asphalt during the course of construction, that'll need to be resurfaced. I think, I understand Gary's interpretation, he was saying, no, I think the city should be aware that you're gonna have to approach this afterward in a bigger. Unified approach.
Uh, yeah, that's a great, that's a great point. When usually the, the parking lot, striping and everything, asphalt work is one of the last things we ever do on a project, right? So we can put that off, we can defer all of that work. So later, what we'll do in the meantime on our plan to satisfy the building department, plant department, is that we. Can have our placeholder, that we, how we have it now, where the striping will be, where the parking will be, for the baller, for go. And we'll just show it as asphalt. Very well may be that the entire parking lot is permeable. Or that you have the drive aisles permeable and the parking spaces are, are asphalt, or vice versa. It could be the other way around, where all the parking spaces are permeable papers, where the drive aisle is, or durable asphalt. So we have to have a certain percentage that's permeable, so it would, you know, it'd be really foolish. To, to pave that and all of a sudden find out, no, no, we're going to tear it up and put papers in there, so, yeah. So before, I think the work happens, it would be great if you could get the parking lot design going. And so at least there could be a change order put in for the parking, uh, around the building itself.
There's a meeting on that, I believe, next week, at the first meeting.
I know that permeable favors will be very expensive, much more than asphalt.
Yeah, that's a separate budget.
Have you tried to get a, an exemption from that rule?
We, we won't get the, that's not possible.
This is, I mean, this is all we have.
What, what if just the parking area around the building was permeable? And that's.
Yeah, let's, let, I just wanted to raise that. But I, but I, but I will say that when we consider the cost, the capital cost of the community center. You know, some people would look at it on a, how much per square foot is it? But I turn around and I'd say, you can build it at a low cost per square foot, but if no one uses it. It's pretty expensive, and if it's a higher cost per square foot, but we get lots of usage out of it. Then the cost per usage, it goes down. A parking lot is important to have people be able to access it, because we're not. You know, it's not walking distance from Bicknell Road, for example. But it is, you know, walking distance from this part of that, anyway, sorry, I'm going off, but it's all coming together.
I, I do want to point out also, when the landscape plan is presented. I would suppose that your commi- the committee would want to look at that as well, review the, the design. The design will be done with all of the, the parameters that were been put out there. You know, low water use, deer tolerant, all, all the buzzwords that we use, but. With an emphasis on being butterfly-friendly native plants. But, again, that part of the project, well, very important. Is also something that is. It, it, it's almost like you wanna separate the cost of the building itself from the landscape. And, and treat that as a, a site improvement rather than something purely required from the community center. And that, that will, I think that puts the numbers more in perspective, is again, it's just like this whole, if the whole parking lot. Costs X amount of dollars, and then that means that the community center looks like it costs Y plus X. Then that's gonna make it look like this is a twenty million dollar building, and not just throwing out an exaggerated number, but, you know what I mean? So I think for, for, just for a reality purpose, the structure and the, and the design and all that. Could be looked at as one part, the landscape, the re-landscape of the entire frontage. Not just what we're replacing as far as from the driveway, is, you know, landscape for, for the entire parcel. As well as with the whole, the parking lot redesign, or, or, you know, paving.
So in, in full disclosure, as always. We're working with Valley Water on what they call a Small Cities Partnership. And they will work with us on a cost reimbursement basis, and we need to separate out. In our costs for the building, what the gray water costs are, what the fixture costs are. And then separate from that, the landscaping. So that we under- so if you think of a Venn diagram, you're thinking of, of the building, and then you're thinking of the landscaping. And the parking lot, so the city has to consider all of those. But their valley water is interested in, in knowing the cost of the landscaping. Plus part of the, the building itself, so we're working all that as well, and, and. Having those numbers, we will look at them separately, but Valley Water is very interested in knowing what they are combined, so. Yep.
Are we working with existing pipes or new pipes?
We're gonna be, the building itself from, from foundation, foundation will be entirely new infrastructure. All new plumbing, all new electrical, all new mechanical system, all new insulation, everything. So all that will be redone, once it leaves the building, that's TBD. Whether the sewer lines are in good shape, whether the intake, the water supplies are, are, are proper for, for a new building.
But plumbing for the irrigation and all that, we should at least find that one.
For, for the, all the landscaping, I would think that that's gonna be entirely new.
So, there are two water meters, and we wanna reduce that to one water meter, but we wanna sub-meter. The water that's going to the landscaping and to the other building. The other, the community center, so I don't know where the, where the. Meter will be located, so that's demarcation between where San Jose Water Company bringing water in, and then. Where are we paying for the water, but currently there's two meters and we will go to one, that's all to be determined.
So there's two meters, one that goes to this building, one that goes to that, yeah, and, and was there a reason why you wouldn't just leave the two meters?
I think that there's some economies of scale, but also simplicity. So. San Jose Water Company is moving towards a higher per meter charge. So, and a lower volume metric charge. So if you're, you know, what's the point of investing in low, in low water usage items where. There's no return on it, you know, anyways. We wanna keep it simple, we wanna move quickly, we want everything.
Typical client.
I, I have to ask this question as a natural engineer. Is there a spec yet for the electrical system, specifically the batteries? Are they meant to run for ten minutes until the emergency generator kicks in?
Let's deal with that offline, because we're also getting involved, SPAM. They've offered to help out with some equipment, and they're very sophisticated relative to. Other electrical panels, so.
Could, could answer your question, from my experience. What happens is the generator kicks in first. If that's designed to do it, or the batteries kick in first, but you can't have them both set up to be automatic, one has to have a manual switch. So.
But you can specify the batteries to be able to run for thirty minutes, and somebody has to run out, start the generator. There, there are multiple ways to design a system like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I can be off-grid forever. Permanently if I wanted.
You wanna do cooking demonstrations ever?
My, uh, my solo panels can keep up easily with our usage. And store the energy in the batteries, and during the recent outages, our power, our four days. And I noticed it.
That's a great story, yeah.
What else do we need to hear? Can, can you talk about a timeline at all?
Um, I, I think that our goal is three to four weeks to have, from start to finish, have things ready to go to bid. The bid process is gonna be very interesting, this is public bidding, it's very paperwork-intensive. It's, uh, it's, it's a little tedious. And luckily, it's a small building, so we can do that. I am not totally up to speed on the pre-qual, the, the pre-qualification process. But I think it's a very interesting thing, and I think it, all that stuff should be flushed out. The, the two contractors that I spoke to, one, the one that I got a prelim bid from, they both are very interested in bidding it. But if it's gonna be like, if they're gonna set ten bids, they may not want to. To put their hat in the ring, and that's quite a lot of work to put in there with that much competition. So I, I don't know how that, how that shakes out yet, but that's something that. We will be working on, uh, uh, during that, as always concurrently with job, with the project. We're also gonna be trying to put together the instructions to the bidders and, and, and how to, how to do the pre-qual.
Fortunately, that was all done with the prior bid that was sent out in May of. Twenty twenty-one. So we've got all that, so we're not recreating a wheel, it's, we're just updating that. That documentation, we're updating that process, but from the moment that it appears in the newspaper, in, in. The public domain, I think there's nineteen days of minimum that have to pass before you can open the bids. But there's a pre-process that you can go through, anything that you tell the one bidder, you've gotta tell to the, all the bidders, that sort of thing. But it's in our best interest to make sure that everyone has the same information, you know?
Yes.
From your experience, a, a project like this, um, this, do you expect?
You, you could, I mean, if it was a residential project, private project, you would get two or three. Since it's a public, we never know what the interest is gonna be, but. I, I don't know how many you got last time, only two or three, right?
We received four bids, one was called non-responsive, because they weren't paying a prevailing wage. And there, there were three responsive bids.
Okay.
But I've got all that documentation, that's kind of the city council.
Okay.
Level, but.
But I would think you may even get like six.
Does the city have to accept bids from anybody who wants to submit one?
No, they, they have to meet certain qualifications.
I understand, so if they, if they meet that threshold, isn't the city obligated to take every minute?
Yes, that is correct, yeah. But you can pre-qualify them, you can say, okay, here's what you have, the minimum that you have to show for intervals of experience. Right, you can't just accept the lowest bid from someone that's never done this before.
Okay.
I think it's good that we're having this discussion and asking questions, because the, one of the, the purposes of this committee. Is to recommend a council at a point in time that the process has been robust. And this is the overseeing body or recommending body to city council.
And, and Gary, I don't know if you know the answer to this question, but once we get to the. Point in time where a contractor has been. Point in time where a contractor has been retained and we're ready to go. Construction a year maybe?
I think it could be done quicker.
Okay.
Um, it's fairly simple. Um, just have the structure there, even though we have the demolition and remodeling always takes as long as to build over, but um. Uh, I I think that, well, the one gentleman that that we got the bid from. I think he was thinking. Eight months.
Okay.
But with city inspectors on site. Um. Everybody uh wanting to move. At at a at a rapid pace. Um, I I think that that. That's certainly a reasonable time. We might have to wait for PG&E.
Yeah, they're they're a year plus out a lot of time, yeah, yeah.
Oh, actually, you just. Blagged something that we had talked about. Uh, in terms of the timeline. The by folding door. That we've planned, that Garius and and Jac- Jaclyn have put into the plans that we all like. That will. Probably take the longest lead time. And we met with a gentleman from uh a window company, Argonaut Door. And once they understand the specifications, what we can do. To to make sure that's not on the critical path is we may be able to order that independently from the entire bid process. So that we don't have to wait, you know, the lead time is six months on it, you know? So we're we're trying to identify what materials. Are on the critical path, and we're a lot better than we were a year ago.
We are, but. Windows, even windows are taking six months plus, so. It might, we might need to look at the whole, the window and door package. On its own. Um, there are several, speaking of windows real quickly, this is the guy, kind of guy, get you guys prime. Um, there are several window companies out on on the market. Um, I have a few that I prefer. Um, but we're going to be looking at this not only for the most appropriate window. For for the project. Um, from a maintenance standpoint, from a functional standpoint, from an aesthetic standpoint. But we might also have to throw in the timing. If window company A. Uh, has a very similar window, window company B, but they can. Uh. Deliver in three months with this other company is six months, that this might. Unfortunately, might just take them out. And we might have to go with, you know, the one that can that can deliver quicker, as long as the product is is equal. And so we'll have to be looking at that. Um, and we have to take that into consideration. I have a project right now that's an ADU in Monteserino. That we started, we ordered the windows. Um. Even before the contractor had had to sign contract here, you ordered and paid for the windows. Because it was a six month lead time. And. And they were due, they were due in January, and we still haven't gotten them. So it's held up the project because. Without having windows, you can't. Weather tight the building. Which means you can't do any electrical. And so in the winter time, and obviously this winter is is was an extreme case, and so this building has been sitting there. Waiting for windows, and so they could actually complete the project, and it's been, this has been a really kind of a a. A big setback for the client. Yes.
On windows on the highway nine side, are we gonna do any sound mitigation in how we order those windows? I know you can vary the size of glass.
We.
Between the two panes to. Mediate sound.
That was what we had proposed. We proposed to order those windows um for better for sound. Um. We will be treating the wall itself with with the right acoustic um. Layers and 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 materials to make the wall itself. Very sound um resistant, but the windows themselves. Maybe that, and one of the things we may want to look at doing fixed windows instead of operable windows on the highway nine side. I don't see any reason why you'd want to have a operable window on the highway nine side myself, but there might be a reason you want.
We talked about this at the last meeting that. In light of having the kitchen fire and and. With rage and guns increasing the. That the need for egress and on um. More than one side, so making one of the windows probably by the kitchen area. Uh. Able to for people to to exit.
Yeah. Well.
Emergency.
Yeah, I mean, from a from a building like this, exiting through a window is not um an approved escape. It's only for residential. You can escape through a bedroom window. So for a for a public building of this zone of this use, I don't think a window is gonna work for egress. You have to have a door. So we have to have a real official uh door. So that was planned to go into the 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 gathering room as well. But as far as windows operable, so I'm not saying that someone couldn't escape out of a window. And wouldn't escape out of a window is common sense, if that's what you have to do. But it won't, can't be an official, officially recognized means of escape. However, I do agree that that the windows on Rose Avenue one at least should be operable. Just to get some fresh air, they're great, you know, cross ventilation, which is a um. A a smart thing to do to save energy, you know? You can just get a little breeze going through this, through that building will will cut your air conditioning costs, so. Um. It's just the uh. When you have a um operable window, the the sound. Um, tendency, whatever that word is, uh, is not as good. As as a fixed one. You can get a better sound attenuation number from a fixed window. So that's why maybe all the windows on highway nine are fit. And that those are the, this is an example again of. All of these um things that we are going to now. Uh, make a list of and present and discuss with the committee. At at our next, at our next meeting, when we have all of these things up up there. This is what we're planning. What do you guys think? Um, and these even, we might even be. Looking at a couple um of window companies. And then doing some preliminary research as far as what's their lead time.
Yeah. Are there any other components of the building that? You're aware of where the lead time is an issue?
Uh, appliances. Yeah, um, so we'll have to be careful about the appliances. Um, right now, I think all of the uh other parts and pieces that go into the building. Are coming back into a a more regular timeframe, electrical breakers. Um, so certain other uh components like that are are much more at hand now. Um. If we don't need a very large switchgear electric meter, i.e. a four hundred amp or six hundred amp panel. Um, that we're getting regular wall panels, then that's should not be an issue time wise. Um, those are the big things. Yeah, roofings available, the sightings available. Um.
And even the appliances, we can button the building without appliances. That's that's not gonna compete.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's usually the refrigerator, I think, are the are the longer sleep time. The high end ones.
I know we're not necessarily choosing furniture right now, but if there are. Um, manufacturers that tend to supply projects like that or ones that other talents have used, is it worth? Just having a conversation with them to see whether we should have a closet? Built in for whatever furniture we may get? Because the closet, no closet discussion for the furniture. Would be an earlier discussion to have.
That, I'm glad you raised it. That's absolutely critical, and we've got to. Understand the furniture requirements, and I think that Jacqueline. Created a s- a closet and its size, and um I would. Recommend that you go over and take a look at Los Alcoas Community Center. And their furniture is, I mean, they they did this two years ago. We just take their furniture spec and say, which one do we like? Let's go with it. Let's not recreate that design. So.
Yeah.
Eh eh, listen, if we can get any help from any of you, we we welcome it. Absolutely. Um, I think if if we can all be, work as a team, that'd be great. So if any of you have uh expertise or connections with. With interiors, um, that would be more than welcome to have your assistance.
And we're very appreciative of your connections, like Mr. Fox supplying his time. That that's just very, very generous. Please thank him.
Are there items that we need to cover before the meeting tomorrow night? At the committee, are there are there things that you wanna? Ask?
There, no. You you I. You did mention talking about um your donations. Um, and all that.
Yes.
That's something that. That we will actually be presenting tomorrow night.
Um, you won't be presenting that, but I will be making an announcement that we've got. Uh. I'll I'll describe. What that line item is gonna be, and it's a hundred thousand dollars in in funding. And of that hundred thousand, we're trying to get two hundred and thirty nine donors. In total. And uh we've got. Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. And nine. Is twenty, we have. Twenty one confirmed donors.
You're you're at the ten yard line. Only ninety more to go. Um. I just want to offer that we will provide any exhibits, any graphics that we can uh that are needed for the campaign. Um. And and once all that is put together. Um, I also will be. Happy to uh personally contact. Anybody I know in the city of Monteserino. And um twist their arm, so.
Thank you very much.
I think I think it's absolutely critical to show community support for this project, and that's why we're all here, I think. You know, uh, two members of council, two members of the site architecture, three members of the public. I mean, that that's a lot of resource. And we wouldn't be sitting here if we didn't think that it had the support of the community, but to actually. Have some some donations is critical, but we've also got the five hundred thousand dollar grant from. Uh, Silicon Valley Clean Energy. And I will say that when I'm in some meetings with. With other cities. And the folks from Sunnyvale look in there like, we're twenty eight percent of the load, you're point zero point four percent of the load, and you got five hundred thousand dollars. So there's a lot of volunteer time at SBC. That we're trying to do, and and also we want to bring this to the community. Um, I will, I I'm sensitive to the time, but I but I. Did bring this project up when I met with. Senator John Becker. On Monday for lunch, Abert and I met with him. And uh. Housing is at the top of every municipality's um. Thought right now because of the housing element and what's going on with the villagers remedy and all kinds of things. We have met that. We believe through our proposal to or two hundred and twenty five. ADUs in the city of Monteserino, and I described to Senator Becker. That what we're doing is we're building this community center and using that. Which is amidst at thirteen hundred and sixty five square feet. It's a mid-sized ADU. But we're showing people, here's what you can build, and here's how to build it. So it's energy efficient and it's and it low water usage. You know, it's resilient. So that they can take that idea and lower their their building design and and construction costs themselves. And. He's like, that's a brilliant idea, you know, to show others what to do. It's very hard to relate to a big commercial bill, I think, if you're a homeowner. If you're a homeowner and you walk into our community center, it's like, I get it. Right? We've got the great room there. The only thing it doesn't have is a bedroom. But that's easy, that's easy to carve out, to say, oh, we need to put a bedroom here. So, yeah, I'm sensitive to our time, but I I think these are all pieces that are that are coming together.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else?
Very much.
Who was going to present tomorrow to the city council?
Well, I think Gary's going to be doing the. Presentation, but I think it's it's, there's no decision tomorrow. I think it'll be just like we're having tonight, this morning. Kind of a conversation, and people say, what, what, did you think about this? Do you think about that? You know, we're okay, and and to give co- council and the public confidence. That this project is integrated with other things that are going on. We're looking ahead. To the construction side where, you know, we want to get competitive bids. People are interested in this project. You know, it's it's communications.
I think it's just um. Uh, piggybacking on what Heather did last month. You you did a uh initial presentation.
That last month, yeah.
Or whatever. Um. Yeah, and and we're happy to show like the renderings again, um, if you think that's important or like a general floor plan. So we just have the pictures up there. Um. If you have any idea. Uh, any ideas that you would like to relate to me to present to the council, if that's. Acceptable under the Browns Act, then then please go ahead and email me. Or or catch me after the meeting today and let me know.
Yeah, I think that we're also going to, for the first time, put some preliminary numbers in front of council. And it's gonna have, I think they're. Very similar to the numbers that we described last, in our last meeting. So it's gonna be around a million and a half. And, you know, one line item is gonna be the hundred thousand community support in there. Um, obviously, we've got the five hundred from Silicon Valley Clean Energy and some other things, though.
Yeah.
Isn't it, we have to include, but. Parking, driving, and.
It includes the landscaping, but it does not include. The parking lot, parking lot separate.
Okay.
But we do want to. We do need to. To. Consider the landscaping because you can't do the building without the landscaping because of the irrigation and other things, you know, the the gray water. And and that's very important to. Valley water as well.
Does that project do this year, this calendar year?
I don't know the exact timing, but it. It has to be started and it has to be on, you know, in the cycle, if you will.
Okay.
Other things?
Yeah, we're good, yeah, we're excited.
Well, with that, I will adjourn the meeting at nine forty four.
Thank you, Gary. Thanks, Andy, yeah.